All right. I call this regular meeting of the Southwest Looking Local School Board to order. I would like to recognize all of our visitors in the room and watching online. If you would please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Jones, could you please call the roll?
Mrs. Engel.
Here.
Mrs. Moore.
Here.
Mr. Vincent.
Here.
Mr. Zani. Mrs. Spindler.
Here. We have two people for public participation today. Mr. Troutman, you have five minutes. Please start with your name and address, and Mr. Jones will keep time for you.
My name is Todd R. Troutman. I live at 6565 Almond Road, Patasola, Ohio 43062. Hi, good evening, board.
Hello.
I'm here tonight on behalf of myself, but also I suspect the end of about the time printing this out. Three hundred and eight other parents and people in the community have signed a petition to express a lot of concern about the idea of moving the public library into the same building as the Kirkersville Elementary School. Well, Newburg is what it was called. There is a, I don't know if any of you are familiar with the online group that has borne and kind of took fire over the last few days. There's a lot of undertones of anger and a thought of we're feeling very left out of the equation and almost kind of duped in that we understand that all of these proceedings and everything is public knowledge, and we get a lot of things from the school and our emails and our PTO letters and everything. And I'm involved in the PTO also, so it's, we get all kinds of information. But we, and nobody I've spoken to in person especially, is okay with the middle school going or with the public library going as well. Well, we've seen the partition. We've seen all of the things that you guys have put into place in the previous meetings and everything like that. I've watched all the YouTube and everything. And nobody believes that there's adequate safety and really thought that went into the move into that middle school. The playground is abysmal, and it's hard already to get unmotivated children, which unfortunately, sometimes my son can be to go to school, and sending him to school into a 60-degree classroom and sending him outside to a small patch of asphalt and then inviting the public to come to the same building. Like, I, there's multiple decisions that are being made, and there's a ton of parents, including myself, who feel like we are just absolutely left out of the watch. So, yeah, I mean, I have, I have things that I printed out. I have like Ohio code things about like the playground. I don't think you guys can actually respond to me right now, right? That's not recording this, so I'm not even gonna go ahead and ask any questions and expect anything back. But there is a lot of things that parents would love to hear and have a conversation back from and see where we can come from or come to some, some sort of agreement. I will say that I am, and I believe that a lot of parents are hardline on you cannot put the public library in the same building as our children. That is absolutely unacceptable. And the fact that nobody, I listened to the meetings of the initial plan and the concern. And the problem that me and a lot of parents are having is the safety was like a five-minute conversation, and I believe it was you, Mr. Vincent, who even said you were hesitant about it for an extra second, and then somebody said, "It will be fine," and it blew over like that. What happens if somebody in the library pulls a firearm? That's the same building. All the children go outside. You're allowing the access to the parking lot through all of the area where the children won't be visible. And it, so there's a lot of concerns, including this. There's a hard no coming from the community, very loud no as well, that I really think that there's some communication that could be had to smooth things over. So I will put myself out there for that if you guys wanted to do that. I'm involved, I'm a Kirk representative for the PTO. I know that doesn't really mean anything, but I will, I want to be involved in this community, and I want to help this not happen again because the, if you get online, the feeling of comments, you're gonna be angry, and that's because people feel like the safety of the kids was second. That is justified anger in my opinion. So thank you very much for hearing me and talk to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we have Ms. DeFlinter.
DeFluter.
Sorry.
That's good, good evening.
Same as before.
So basically, you heard the gist of everything, I think. But again, my name is Chelsea DeFluter. My address is 325 Hilldale Road, Patasola, Ohio 43062. Obviously, I have a student at Kirkersville Elementary, and next year I'll have two there. Like, he already mentioned, we're very disappointed anyway in moving into this building per se. You know, like he already mentioned, I'm not gonna mention everything again, but no playground. It's just, it's a big disappointment. It was a big change for our students that they had to take on anyway. Getting my son to school after winter break was, has not been great. And I don't know that it's always the building. Like I said, it's not, it's not the Arrow, it's the Indian. I understand that. So, and we do have great teachers, and I'm very blessed to say that, and that we live in a district like that. But just some quick background about me, I am a public school teacher. This is my 11th year of teaching, and I will tell you, safety has always been, in the district I'm in, a number-one priority. If kids don't feel safe, they're not gonna learn. And luckily, my children don't even know what's going on right now, but we are the advocates for our children. And if we're not gonna advocate for their safety, who will? So like I said, safety is huge, especially in schools. All the trainings that teachers and staff do throughout the year, Alice training, all these trainings that we do, we're doing live trainings in my building, and we're literally inviting threats into Kirkersville. I don't know what else to say, but, but I do wanna thank you guys for giving us the opportunity to speak tonight, to hear our voice, to listen to us, and I really hope you hear us out. I hope we're not just here talking and it gets brushed under the rug, because I will tell you, almost every single parent at Kirkersville is very upset. And I hope you understand that. I mean, I'm sure most of you guys have kids, and the safety of your child is very important, and not just my children, the safety of every student and staff member in that building is huge. So like I said, you know, the students at Kirkersville are from age five to nine. They're naive, they're young, they're not gonna recognize a stranger. Most of our kids go up to a stranger and give them a hug and say hi, because that's we teach them how to be kind. So it really scares me that we're welcoming people we don't even know, strangers per se. I know it's our public, it's our community, but they are strangers. And we're welcoming them not only into our building, but our parking lot. There's more chances of hitting a kid, there's more chances of stealing a kid, there's more chances of, you know, bringing a firearm into the building, whether, like I said, it's in the library, like you said, but the library is in the same building, same address. Another major concern, which happens at the, in the building I'm currently working in, people knock on outside doors. And if you come to the library and you don't know exactly what door to go in, you're knocking on a different door. Students, because they're young, they don't know, might open the door and let these strangers in. Adults, believe it or not, even in my building, it's ridiculous, will let, someone knocks on the door and they let them in. Huge safety concern. So we're literally opening this building up to danger, and it really scares me. I work with several school resource officers. I spoke to them. I've also spoke to some of the school resource officers in other districts, and they were beyond appalled by this. So that this was even an option that the district thought about. Again, I don't know, I would love to talk about, you know, some problem-solving ideas. I'm not here to complain and complain and not try to problem solve. There's so many ideas that are running through my head. I don't wanna waste my time talking about it, but I would later on love to problem solve and come up with different ideas for our kids' safety. I also talked about, like I said, the parking lot, how are even unidentified cars, suspicious cars, our kids are out at recess, playing on Blacktop. But again, I mean, it's just, we're inviting strangers into the building, and there's nothing safe about it, and in my eyes, there's nothing good coming out of this. If you need a library book that bad, go to a local, another local library. They're all over the place. So I don't know, I'm just very concerned. It's gonna be much harder to monitor the activity of random people coming in and out of the building, random people walking around the building, people getting into, even by accident. I know I talked to another student, a resource officer that said they had, one district tried to share a building with the doctor's office. So many people, again, would knock on doors and come in because they didn't know where the entrance was, weren't exactly sure how to get in, and we're letting these strangers into the building. In conclusion, this is not safe or what is best for students. We're putting our kids and students at Kirkersville Elementary lives at risk. No money is worth this, no book is worth this. This is absolutely unacceptable solution to the problem. And no matter how much things you put in place or safety precautions, it's still increasing the risk of our students and the safety risk.
30 seconds.
Okay, thank you. Finally, I wanna thank you for your time and consideration. I really hope you ultimately make a decision based on what is truly best for our kids and for our students here in Patasola. And again, I'm worried, and I really hope we can come up with a better solution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Need a motion to adopt the agenda, and I will move that with a change. If we could move Mr., I'm sorry, I have to scroll down to find the name. Mr. Clifford up to the top so that he can speak first instead of last.
I'll second that.
Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Spindler.
Yes.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mrs. Engel.
Yes.
Mr. Vincent.
Yes.
And that means Mr. Clifford, if you are here and would like to speak. Mr. Clifford, you also.
December 270 Leveling Drive, Reynoldsburg, Ohio. I'm the father of four children enrolled in Southwest Looking Schools. In the history of the Clifford children enrolled at these Southwest Looking Schools, the very stewards, guardians, educators, counselors, and principals have shown district-wide a favoritism based on hearing repeated salacious accounts from one parent. I can prove these false accounts have been adopted, embraced, and repeated with dignity characteristic, characterization to myself by the school officials. I have come to enlighten you about ongoing challenges that I face as a dutiful, devoted, and concerned parent. This is the sixth month of the fourth year in which I have requested and sought for court ordered equal access to my children on school grounds, all activities, all educational records, medical records that pertain to my children. I have yet to experience and enjoy the equal access to my children's individual comprehensive educational, medical, and psychological records. My attorney even forwarded a formal, formal notice to the request of, for me requesting for information on December 10, 2022. I have made no less than 12 requests for records on my children/child's IEP meeting, which is a violation of state and federal laws to withhold that information from me. My equal access has been circumvented, deferred, and flatly ignored. A systematic and sustained front has been perpetrated in all, in all efforts to deny the state's rights of affording the rights of the children, Clifford children, to enjoy their rightful paternal parent and paternal rights of me as well for the caregivers and capable adults. I charge, not plead, the Board of Education to adopt policy to correct the wrong gross neglect of duty and to hold administrators and educators accountable that hold the same duties as educational licenses I do, and now here and stand, standing court orders equal to my equal access in case number 2019 D R. 294, divorce decree stamped dated August 29, 2022, Fairfield County. I charge Southwest Looking District to refrain from all wrongdoing, prior acts, and gross and now stand for the children's rights in accordance with the court orders as referenced, transmitted, and surrender all efforts to be in contempt of these prior court orders dated August 29, 2022. I also am requesting a formal apology to be written and for the time, monetary expense, and the emotional suffering that I, the father, had endured and to spend, also compel the Southwest Looking Districts to comply with court orders and federal laws specifically regarding my son's IEP meetings to be placed in each child's permanent record. It is important for the children to have the truth put in their file. To date, this, at this very meeting, despite documented 29 communications received shortly pertaining to my concerns, I still have been denied these rights to equal access despite numerous heartbroken personal requests of Southwest Looking Schools officials. I have been denied the official custody of records, denied access to my children's teachers, educators, denied psychological records, denied access to equal access to meetings and conferences without basis and due cause from court orders that would support that cause. In this case, Southwest Looking Schools, the school districts, has taken a salacious story and gross accusations as evidence and ex parte without one shred of proof to the contrary that the children would be at risk if fathers care as a dad, as a coach, and as a teacher over 31 continuous years in public school. Let me be clear, I have never relinquished my privilege of being a parent, my parental rights, nor have I ever abandoned my children in either duty or diligence in pursuit of protecting their rights to reach their full potential and to visit with a healthy, capable father that I have exhibited by all accounts. I have not, and I have not and shall not allow for any force to be falsely formed, enforced for naive, for our naive actors to ever deny me the dignity of my parental rights and the children's rights to enjoy their father's involvement without interference at home or school or any superior parent.
30 seconds.
The misdirecting, misdirected and misdirected stories have perpetrated a negative response from staff against me that have zero basis in fact and yet have been permitted to continue as gossip among school officials. These unfounded, untrue stories have originated from and one parent as a continuing smear campaign to divide parental visitation and access records by insulting, instilling, excuse me.
Time's up.
Unfounded stories and unfounded fears that have garnered images and the children's rights for visitation normally that would have occurred on school premises over time.
Thank you, Mr. Clifford.
Passing out these guy, these, they give you the 29 communications, which is not nearly exhaustive, of issues that have been a concern of me searching for my equal access that I guarantee under the state federal law.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Cameron, you are aware the livestream is not working? Thank you.
I, I got pulled up, but it's.
Okay. All right. Good to go. I just got a message, so.
Good, how are you? Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
But we're sure it's recording, correct?
Oh, yes, positive.
Okay.
I mean, like I said, I, she can pull up the screen, she sees it on her laptop, so I know it's even going on.
Okay.
Just when I try to pull up my phone, I go to 404 page, so I think somebody's going along with our public website.
Okay. Huh?
I don't, I don't know what that meant, but okay. Kathy.
Okay.
Kathy.
Yeah. Five? Do you guys wanna, do you think you got five minutes? You can figure it out?
Jeff, do you think it's something you can fix right now or not?
Well, I don't, I don't even, I don't have any access to the website, so I don't know what, yeah, I don't know what's going wrong with it. I'm trying to get signed into my.
We can take a break.
I would say no. I'd say just, if it's being recorded, I would say we should continue on.
All right, but it's being recorded, correct? All right.
I just got a text that it washed it fine, so.
Yeah, and she's doing, she just.
She texts.
That's what I know, I received it.
So.
I logged into the website and checked as well.
I got a text that says I'm on the livestream and it's working.
So must be the devices that people are using has to be the phone or something?
Huh? Okay, well, we're, we're gonna go ahead and go forward since it's being recorded. Item, item two, presentations on bullying, harassment, restraint, and seclusion.
Dr. Moore. Are you doing the bullying, harassment?
Yeah, I mean, the numbers are there, recorded from each building. The principals are not here this evening to speak to those, but for Kanchewski and I could minister to this, we try to answer any questions that you might have. We did put the historical numbers in there as well, so you can kind of refer back to those.
The improvement at the high school is good. Thank you.
Very good.
Yes. Must do need some of the policy changes they have hoped with that.
And no huge increase at the middle school?
No.
Does anybody have any questions or comments?
No.
Okay, item three, request to speak on agenda item Teamsters or Southwest Looking Education Association?
I am Paula Ball. I'm president of SLE, the Teachers Association, and I just wanted to say I have remarks at the end about non-agenda, but I did wanna say that we appreciated Dr. Perkins collaborating with us on the calendar for next year. She listened to our concerns and addressed several of them, so we appreciated that. She sent out a survey to the staff, which I think, because it was a difficult, what do you do with Christmas next year, so I appreciated that as well. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item four, approval of minutes from the December 15 regular meeting.
Approve those minutes. Motion two.
Mr. Jones?
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Spindler?
Yes. Item, what is this? Five, the financial report. Ms. Second. Mr. Jones?
That's the agenda's second summary for month end, December 31st, calendar year end. Nothing really out of the ordinary, pretty much what we expected for the month. A year date or revenue is 3% higher than anticipated, and our expenses are 3% lower than anticipated, so we are doing very well. I'll be glad to answer any specific questions you may have, but we're right where we expected to be, a little better.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Jones?
No.
Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes. Item six, personnel consent calendar, we have A through G.
Motion approval A through G.
Second.
There's nothing significant on personnel.
Okay. Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Item seven, business items that I think we have to take a separate, because it has to be untabled. Right?
To take from the table, the first reading of policy committee.
Second. So any discussion? Do you want to say anything or no?
Not now, let's just take it from the table.
Okay. Oh, okay. Now we have item seven.
We gotta vote first.
Oh, right. Okay, Mr. Jones.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
No.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Item A is untabled, so now it's seven A through I.
Can we do seven B separately?
Sure.
Well, if someone motions that.
Do you need a motion to, do it separate? No?
No, just need a motion to prove.
Motion to seven C through.
You can do.
Want something else separate?
Yeah, I do. We could just do.
Let's just do them separate.
All right. I think, I think after we get through C, we'll be, we'll be okay.
Probably be.
All right, so. You need a motion to approve seven A.
I, I, no, I will motion to approve seven B.
Seven B.
Oh, right, that's seven B. Got it.
Motion to approve seven B.
So, I can start, John, or did you want to start?
No, it doesn't.
I mean, I, I can speak to it for a moment, then you can jump in. So obviously, this was tabled last time after a discussion about conflicting feelings with the military terminology. Upon further research, this is tied to federal funding, so if we are to not adopt it, the policy, that could jeopardize our funding, so that's obviously could have significant results for the school, so.
And while I understand all that, I feel the wording is horrible. I don't like it. It's restrictive to the military, and I just, it is what it is. That's all I'm gonna say.
Any more discussion? Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
No.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Item seven C.
I motion approval seven C.
Do we have a second? Okay. So goes to item seventy.
Motion to approve seven D.
Second. Any discussion? Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Item seven E.
I'm gonna motion seven E through G.
All right.
I'll second that.
Any discussion on any of these?
I mean, two, two overnight trips, the robotics and swim, and then the 23, 24 calendar, so. I don't think there's anything significant to share on any of them.
And we did take into the concern of the.
The union?
The certified staff, so.
Yep, we went back and forth with them, and actually, the survey that was sent out was sent to all employees, both certified and classified, yes.
Awesome. Okay, Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Item seven H, Watkins Memorial High School Course Description Guide.
Will motion approval?
I have a second.
Discussion?
Melissa is here if you guys have any questions.
I'll just say that I, I read through the whole thing, and I like seeing some of the new classes that are coming.
Absolutely.
I appreciate some of the adjustments that were made. You know, last year, I did not vote for this because I, I felt the fees were too high, especially for E L A. And while they're still what they are, and I'm not happy about it, there were improvements made in other areas with fees being reduced or eliminated. This is just my personal plea that, you know, every year we look at this, $30 for an English class that is required, to me is not equitable to a kid who does the college class and doesn't have to pay anything. have to pay anything. And I, I think we need at some point to address that. And again, I do have, I do not like that, but all in all, I did appreciate the, the change, so I am going to support it tonight.
I've already been asked a million times, who's teaching this class and who's teaching that? I'm like, I don't know that, know yet, but it's cool that there are some new ones out there, for sure. Any other discussion?
I like seeing the range for options, so.
And the, the personal finance and classes are a plus. Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes. Item seven I, concession building renovation product.
Motion seven I?
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
We did the bid this project out, we did, we only received the one bid.
The same one?
Same company, but they actually lowered their base bid by $2,000, so it was all right. So, current route south with Gar Miller, talked to him, make sure they understood the scope and thought their bid was good. We also talked to Athletic Boosters to find out if any of the alternates they wanted, they picked two, the resin flooring and then the concrete pad and fencing, think for future freezer, refrigerator freezer combo is what they selected. So, again, we're recommending to go with T-Bilt for a total cost of $367,805.
To be paid back.
Yes, there's agreement to pay back, yes. Once we know the final cost, we'll enter into a agreement.
Okay, at what point does that happen?
Yeah, I think we'll wait till the end, because I think of that 63, 67, about $30,000 contingency.
Okay.
So, if they don't use that, we don't want to put a payment schedule together until we know exactly what the total cost is.
And did they say anything about timeline? Do they think they'll be close?
I think so, because still, nothing changed as far as I know on timeline, still get it done, so that's why we're trying to move it through very quickly and then get the contract out to them so they can get started.
Okay.
But the actual daughter went to Watkins, and she graduated, I think she had a '04 for T-Bilt, so it's, yeah, it's nice.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion? Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Item eight, treasures items, donations and statement of purpose.
Motion to approve eight A and B, A with thank yous.
Absolutely.
Second.
Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Item nine, superintendent's comments.
Well, I'd like to start by addressing the Kirkersville Playground. So, the Kirkersville Playground, I would not disagree, nor would anybody, that the current setup, which is not permanent, is not fabulous. We have ordered additional fencing, we're waiting on that to arrive, an additional Gaga pit's coming, an obstacle course, additional equipment. The negative is, there's only so much grass in that area that can be used because it's going to be in the spring where the new elementary starts their prep and they have to have that area to build. So, it's going to be significantly larger, there's going to be a lot more stuff on it, it's not going to be what Kirkersville is now, it is going to be better. Nobody is saying that playground's great, that was never the intent, that's just a stopgap until we get the additional fencing and all the stuff comes in.
Are they allowed to speak to you or?
No, unfortunately, no. Sorry. But I, I am saying it because you guys brought it up, and I do want people to hear that it's not finished. So, it's not, it's not going to be what the, what the old Kirkersville is, because we don't have the grassy area, but it is going to be better, for sure. The fencing, Mr. Tanschewski, do you know when it's set to arrive?
We, what we did is, we ordered more fencing from Menards, some of the sled fencing, then we've also acquired a lot more sturdy fencing from a company. Again, we are, what we're talking about is where the gates are, we're at the mercy of chain of supply and timelines and everything else, so.
So, you don't know an exact date?
They did it today. We also have Midwest Playground Company, they're coming out, they're going to give, they have some ideas for some structures that they can put in that may, will not be permanent on that site, they will then be able to be moved to a completed site when Kirkersville is finished.
And like, the second Gaga pit's here, it can't fit into the current fencing situation, so the obstacle course is being worked on by the agriculture class at the middle school, so there are things in, in the works, you know, we're in the, it's unseasonably warm for winter, so we're in the middle of the winter thinking we had some additional time to make things happen, but it's, it's not going to be, I'm not going to tell you, it's going to be a ton of grass, because there's not a ton of grass. We have to allow the company building the new elementary to have X amount of grass, which is going to take a significant portion of where, you know, that leads into that on that side of, of the elementary building. So, it's going to be better, and it's going to be larger, more than double the size.
Playground is already put in place before our children move over to the school?
Some of it was, some of it wasn't, so I, I mean, I can, I'd have to have Mr. Wehmer here to answer that question, he's the principal of the building, he made those decisions. We've evaluated the playground, Mr. Tanschewski can tell you, I drove by the size of the playground, and that was not my understanding, and that was prior to any of this stuff happening, so it's, it's going to be fixed. So, that's, that is what I'm telling you is going to happen. Which leads into another thing I want to talk about, is the football parking and the cross-country course, so just so everyone in the board's aware, we're going to have to figure out parking for football, whether we do shuttles from the new high school, because the, we're working, Mr. Tanschewski's working with the athletic director and the coaches, but there's going to be, again, the building of the new elementary is taking up all that grass, also up to the practice field where soccer goes, so we're losing significant amount of parking. We are going to look into potentially taking down, possibly taking down parts of the tennis court, not taking the whole thing down, that's part of the, you know, demolition project, but enough where if we took the sides down and removed the post, we could use that for parking, so we're going to look into some things like that as well, but that is on our radar, because that will be here before we know it. So, we, we realize that's coming, and that's going to create a problem, too. So, shuttles might be something that we have to do, you know, moving forward. So, I want to tell you that.
Quick question?
Yes.
The soccer practice field, we're still moving those to the other side of the soccer stadium?
Yes.
To be shared in?
Yes, that is correct, but we're also, we were unable to get a successful company to want to do that work, so we're grouping it in with Elementary Project.
Okay.
So, in hopes that it's a larger for a company, you know, for them to bid on, that they'll want to do that as well, so.
Will it be ready for the fall soccer or the spring?
No, I doubt it.
Yeah, I would say that's probably a stretch.
Closer to when the new elementary is completed.
They'll have to use the current practice.
But the current, okay.
It'll be okay.
Okay.
As far as spacing is concerned.
Okay.
There's just not a park.
I was concerned where the food forest was and going to go, and where.
Are you talking for cross-country or soccer?
I was talking for soccer and rugby.
Okay.
I know rugby is not our concern.
The food forest isn't on the, the food forest was moved, it's not on the rugby field anymore. We kept the rugby field at the current rugby field.
Okay.
And we pushed the food forest over more, and then we worked with the cross-country coaches to make sure that the cross-country team would be able to run on the opposite side of it, like alongside of it, so it, it's kind of at a funky shape or angle how we did it, but that way, it accommodates rugby, it accommodates cross-country, and then we're still able to have it.
Okay.
So, it, all of those things will still be intact, yes.
I'd know that the cross-country coaches like to reroute things. It's like a hobby, I'm pretty sure.
I mean, it's, it's going to be, they're going to have to get really creative while the elementary school is being built.
Yep.
So, I'm, that's going to, so they're going to, those conversations are starting now, so we can figure that out before the fall comes for both the football and.
And soccer.
And the cross-country coach and course and soccer.
Yeah.
What is the ground breaking for the new elementary? Do we know?
We hope the spring, but no.
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 No. No more once it's been out, but hadn't been, been out yet, so.
So Gaga number two is in, we're just waiting.
It's been in.
Okay, we're just waiting to place it.
We, we have to have more fencing.
Fencing.
Yeah, it can't fit in there, it's too tiny. Yes, correct.
And are we putting up our own fencing? Like, I know we're buying it, are we doing our grounds, people, are they doing? Okay.
Okay, sorry to interrupt.
No, it's okay.
You have another thing.
No, uh, let me set my list here to make sure. Oh, and then the only other thing I want to share is, we are doing again the Licking County Job Fair on March 20th, that was a huge success last year. We had over 160 attendees, we've invited additional colleges this year, and we've had other area schools reach out to participate on top of the ones we had last year. C-Tech will be joining us, Newark Catholic, so we are going to do that again. We had great candidates come from all over, so that's going to be something positive that's coming.
Perfect. Okay.
And that's it.
Awesome. Item 10, request to speak on non-agenda items, Teamsters or Southwest Licking Education Association?
All right, while I want to start tonight by sharing with the board that Janie Trenish has stepped into a SLE officer role for the remainder of the year until our next election. She is our new second vice president. For my remarks tonight, at the risk of sounding like a broken record, I continue to be concerned about the need for diverse voices regarding the decisions made regarding the operations of the district. Even with the most talented administrators, they cannot possibly represent the view of all stakeholders. Specifically, I am still concerned with the board's decision to remove the anonymous link for the teaching staff to make comments and ask questions of the board. This link was unique to Southwest Licking, instituted by the school board to assure that the teaching staff voices could be heard without any repercussions. I am also concerned that decisions be made with a wide variety of voices so that the board can consider the impact of decisions on all impacted parties. The board used to have numerous advisory committees that includes SLE leaders, teachers, parents, community leaders, community members and others. You know I like a good survey, but I also like a committee when they are purposeful. As I shared last month, SLE is collecting data from every member regarding ideas, suggestions and concerns over the next few months. I will be sharing the information with the administration and when appropriate for a public forum with you. My initial thought in reviewing the data is we must work together to do the most we can to provide teachers and other staff with the tools, time and supports to allow them to educate the, this community's most precious resource, our children. One concern wildly expressed regards the lack of support when one of a pair of co-teachers are absent, or when there is not a substitute for a classified staff member, such as in the learning centers at the middle school and high school, which are designed to help address accommodations for our special ed students, like small group testing, those kinds of things. I will give you one suggestion that we have, that I've already shared with Dr. Perkins and Mr. Tanschewski. The state has changed the requirements to be a substitute along college students to serve as daily subs. So, my suggestion was that we actively recruit those education majors, reaching out to those colleges and those education departments to see if we can get those students in. They will have a vested interest in learning about the classroom, they are also future possible employees that will learn how great it is to be in our communities, and so I hope that that is something that is being considered and, and worked on. I love the job fair, we have several employees that came from that job fair, so I love that they are doing that. Having more substitutes will greatly help relieve the stress of being short-staffed at all of the buildings, it impacts everything, it's a domino effect, the administrators, it impacts theirs, which impacts teachers, teachers impacted for covering, it's just a domino effect that impacts all of us. I will end with the same plea I have made the last few board meetings, which is, we are in an increasingly serious national teacher shortage, and we want to work together to create the teaching conditions that will minimize the impact the teaching shortage will have on Southwest Licking in the upcoming years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 11, we need a motion to adjourn into executive session to, for the purpose of employment of a public employee and for the sale of property at competitive bidding.
Second.
Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
And we're now in executive session, and we.
We have business after.
We will have no business after.
Just adjournment.
So, except for the adjournment.